Well, good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you here to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to remind everyone to silence their cellphones. Meeting documents are available for review down next to Commissioner Heiburger. And Carol is here this morning if you need a listening device. First item, I'd consider a motion to amend the agenda to remove item 12, an item to authorize the chairperson to sign the stockpile land lease agreement with the South Dakota Department of Transportation.
Take a motion to delete item 12.
I have a motion.
A second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And now I take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Okay, motion.
The aliens must leave.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes from May 28, 2019.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to consider, I'd consider a motion to pay the bills in the amount of
Pay the bills. Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is reports. We have the Minnehaha County EMS summary for January 1st through March 31st. Good morning, Dr. Luther.
Good morning, Commissioner. Dr. Jeff Luther, Quality Assurance Director for the Minnehaha County Primary Service Areas, the ground ambulances. Thank you for this opportunity to present this first quarter report. I also want to thank Jason Guirman and then Justin Faber here for their input. We've been working on this report for a while and I just want to acknowledge their involvement. We will, I think, do we have a copy?
It's on Dropbox, so I'll, I think Trish can get it loaded up on the screen for you. Thank you.
Well, for this report, and I'll summarize in the end where we've come since the ordinance changed last July and the impact that we've had with respect to QA and where we're headed. Anyways, in a summary executive style that we've done, or I've looked at it, there's been 407 911 calls that I've been able to access with our, this is state electronic medical record, Image Trend, and from that I'm able to pull all sorts of information. I'm working with the state and gaining more filters so we're able to narrow and consolidate a lot of the things that I think the commission would like. There is also some opportunity to à la carte, if you will, any type of specifics that the commission may be interested in. But as an overview, this report is reflective of that data, which is something way different than I used to do, which was a manual process. Now, not every report that is filled out by the primary service areas has every data field documented. We're working on that and hoping that we will be able to get that where the required or the necessary elements for quality assurance purposes will be in every report. Jasper Ambulance had no reports for this time period, so we won't be reporting on anything that they have. The calls reviewed as per our ordinance include all cardiac calls, cardiac arrest calls, trauma, and pediatric calls. But I also look at now that we're doing ALS for advanced life support, advanced airway management. What we have here is, that first slide is the total EMS responses for the first quarter of 2019, and it lists through the number of 911 calls that we have for each primary service area. MedStar Del Rapids, Garrettson Humboldt, and Paramedics Care Logistics, which is formerly Paramedics Plus. And in the next slide, this is the most common types of responses that we see in the county, and that is transfers. So about 80%, 87% of the total responses we see involve some sort of a transfer. It could be from a clinic to a hospital, or it could be nursing home to the hospital and vice versa. With respect to the medical problems, breathing problems and unconscious are about 25%, 27% of the calls make up. Sick person is a kind of a broad card that involves any kind of symptom complex, and so that's dispatched out as a sick person. Somebody may say that they haven't eaten, or they've got some kind of a discomfort, and so the card that we pull from will be dispatched as a sick person. Falls, 47% are due to some kind of a fall, elderly, people from ladders, those sorts of things. And then injury accidents is about 54%. That's where traumas will hide. The next slide that we've got, we have 60 seconds. 911 will dispatch the, or will timeout, and the services have to acknowledge that they received the call within 60 seconds. If they haven't, then there's a second call out, and then they're given another 60 seconds. And then after that, 30 seconds, after which they'll go to automatic aid to the next call if they're not answering. But they have 10 minutes to be en route, and a lot of these services now have ALS, paramedics in the station. And so these changes have, these times have actually changed over the last couple of years. But you can see that the averages are in the blue box. This is the time that the ambulance starts en route to the call. And 90% of the time is in the orange block. So you could see that the paramedic logistics, or paramedic care logistics, they're a little quicker because they're out on post. So they're already sitting rubber on the road, if you will, as opposed to if a volunteer responds, may have to respond from work and to the ambulance station and then pick the ambulance up. But as per the ordinance, we give them 10 minutes to do that. The next slide is the en route to on scene time. There really is no fractile requirement for this. This will be interesting to see, this was January through March, with the flooding and whatnot, how this will be impacted during the second quarter with some of the roads being washed out. But I think overall, the en route to on scene times are pretty good, considering. The next is the total response time. Now, this is dispatch to them getting on scene. So that's the minute that they receive the call, they're en route to the station, they're in their vehicle, and they're now on scene. And again, the blue is the average, and the orange is within a 90% period that those are reached. Next slide is total call duration. This has a little more importance to me, anyway. This helps us to kind of look at the system. We dispatch in a priority system. Priority one is lights and siren. Priority two is lights. Priority three is less emergent. And if we dispatch a call priority one and it's transported priority three, that means that we've done our job and we're already delivering the patient in an improved condition. So we run hot, we provide care, stabilize the patient, and then we can respond or transfer to the hospital in a safer condition than dispatching the hot. And that's a public safety concern because, you know, if we can keep them from running hot, it's just safer for everyone. So these are just times that I look at, and we have specific types of calls where we want to minimize our scene time, particularly trauma in Minnehaha, or in the city. We want that to be less than 10 minutes. In the county, it can be any kind of a hazard that encumbers that. Roads, tractors overturned or what have you can impact scene times on our trauma, but we work on it the best we possibly can. So that's an explanation, a little bit about the call duration. And if we look at our data, the types of calls and the responses, and then we try and get outcomes because the services like to know what the outcomes are. And I'll summarize a little bit about that, too, towards the end. Again, this information that I'm going to present here comes from Image Trend. This is the electronic report that the medics fill out. Once they fill out their report that's uploaded, then I'm able to retrieve it. And I've worked with the state to come up with several different types of filters so that I can get more specific information. And if we look at the first paragraph up there that's got the response mode, again, that's this emergent or priority one, immediate response. About 73% of the 911 calls are emergent. About a quarter of those are non-emergent. And then we have some that are emergent that will be downgraded. That's important because if we're able to assess a problem ahead of time and get the transporting or the responding unit to slow down, that is a safety factor that's important. Some of that has contributed to our Minnehaha County Sheriff's deputies, the EMP basics that are out there. Their response times are very quick, and we'll go through that. And then there's also non-emergents that will be upgraded to emergent, and that could be a car accident that was being responded to that now has an injury, or somebody that's one of those sick person calls, and they're complaining of chest pain or shortens of breath, so those can be upgraded. The second part of this is the impressions. This is the medic's impression of what is going on. This is also a dispatch card. The importance of this is that I can use this type of information to assist with our guideline development. For example, if we look at, you know, well, I look at everyone in the cardiac arrest, both in the city and in the county. And we learn a lot from those with respect to the cause of the cardiac arrest, and then bystander CPR, times to defibrillation. And in the city, we use pit crew CPR. We have law enforcement responds, fire, and ambulance, and everyone has a position. I think it'd be important to, at some point, demonstrate to the commission how that works. We're going to try and get that out into the county as we go forward here. That means if the EMP basic deputy is there first, he can start either chest compressions, find the AED, or even put in an airway, a supraglottic airway. The next service that arrives then can take a position, whether that's doing chest compressions, and then as soon as ALS is there, then they can start the, they can put a needle into the bone, and then they can start medications. So these all, these impressions are important as we look at, you know, what is dehydration, respiratory distress, how is that managed, what is the symptom complex, and what did it end up being? You know, was it asthma, or was it a choking call, those sorts of things? And if you look at the, how we dispatch, and from the minute the call is arrived by the call taker, or received from the call taker, and then there's dispatch, Justin has a, it's a very short and sweet presentation on that. I don't know if the commission has seen it, but it just takes a few minutes. At some point, I think, maybe even on the next quarter, if we could talk him into doing that, I'd give you a real good idea what I'm talking about when we're talking about en route, on scene times, or en route and timed on scene, and those sorts of things. It also gives you an idea of how the dispatch occurs through our EMD, that's Emergency Medical Dispatch Protocols, it's a set of cards, but it's all computerized. So it's literally a sequence that's, that runs very smoothly, and it's very important in our system. And we're accredited, our dispatch center, and so we've got, we've got some significant and very important resource with them for EMS in the county. The other is the disposition. We transport about 72%. Again, I talked briefly about our response, P1, which is emergent, and then transport is that P1 or emergent or P3. Our traumas usually are transferred P1 or emergent. But we transport 72%, which is pretty consistent with systems everywhere else. We do see refusal. Patient just refuses to be transported. That could be anything from a juvenile, parent will decide to take the child to the hospital themselves. It could be where a patient just decides they don't want to be transported. They're then counseled on scene, depending on the nature of the problem, and advised, and then they sign off if the medic feels they need to be transported, but the patient refuses. So that's all documented. There's others here. We see standbys. There's evaluations, but no transport required. Again, that can be a kid falling off a swing, or maybe a diabetic. We get their glucose back to normal with a sugar of either injection or get them to drink something, and they become lucid and recompetent, so they don't want to be transported. And then there's others that, just kind of down this list, deaths on scene, treated and transported by law enforcement, that could be intoxicated individual or drug problem. And I'll talk a little bit about the Minnehaha County Deputy Program. That continues to be a real important part of our EMS community because of their ability to transport. That, when we started looking at that years ago, I thought that was one of the best ideas we've had. We've got, again, rubber on the road, we've got response times. I know that they've had three wake-ups with Narcan over their, since December. You know, Commissioner Barth has been interested in that. The drug epidemic, the opioid epidemic continues, and a lot of cardiac arrest calls or those types of calls end up being related to a drug overdose of some variety. I'll share with you what happens in the city. We have its cares, it's a cardiac arrest register, and we trend all cardiac arrests, and we determine the cause or the etiology. In 2017, there were four deaths related to drug overdose, and that was include opioids or what have you. And then the next year, 2018, there was 20. So we can see that there's a trend there. And again, our sheriff's deputies are equipped with Narcan, as everyone is. And so if they're in cardiac arrest, that's a little different story, but if they're obtunded and they've got respiratory difficulties, we can bring them around. So sheriff's deputies have done that. Also with their defibrillators, they've been there early on in cardiac arrests, and have done a couple of saves there. And I've got a slide that kind of shows the dispatch to on scene time added in, Minnehaha County Sheriff's deputies, and it shows that, you know, again, since they're already on the road, they're able to get very good response times, considering how broad the county is. I wanted to talk a little bit about the updates that are in progress. Again, since the county ordinance changed last July, we've had a change in the auspices of the Department of Emergency Management now falls under the sheriff. We've changed directors, put Jason Guirman in. We've completely gutted the QA process, so that's probably the best news yet. And thanks to getting information from Justin, and we amalgamate that with Image Trend and those filters, I'm able to pull out very specific quality improvement indicators, performance indicators, if you will. And we're getting better and better at that. Again, that's that state's electronic medical record. Paramedics Logistics uses a different one, but they use a different product. But still, with the capacity and capabilities, I'm able to get information much quicker than I was able previously through that technology. Again, we reissued license since the ordinance changed, and now we've got ALS that we have most of the time available in these services. There's still services that have all volunteers on particular calls, and that more than likely will continue as long as the volunteers are involved in their communities. They do a great job. So I'm now able to look at the basic life support, which is critical, it's very important. And we could talk just about how important BLS is compared to ALS for hours, but we've got both available in the county. To summarize, I'm pretty impressed with the responses that we've gotten and the care that's provided. I had a total of nine that fell out. I reviewed those. I only had to contact one of the medical directors, and most of those are recording errors or something along that line. I found no problems with any trends. I'll get better at trending airway attempts and IV success rates, those sorts of things, but I have not seen any issue with that. The guidelines that we're working on, Sioux Falls Fire and Rescue is going to enter into doing advanced life support response. They're not going to be transporting. That prompted a whole change in our guidelines to reflect the transport agency as well as Sioux Falls Fire. It's, we've been working on that for several months. We invited Jason over to see the process as we're wrapping up the editing. And then, once we've completed that and we're all comfortable with all the resources that we pulled out, they're best practice, they're evidence-based, peer-reviewed. So we're then going to put the users in a room and let them go through the process, too, to see if there's any other edifications that they want to add. And then we'll take that next and get back into another work group in the county and see if we can't issue those out or promulgate those guidelines as a unified set of guidelines in the county. We've got buy-in from most of the county and the medical directors, so I think it'll be something that we can put into process. It'll make the review process much, much better, and it'll open up communications between the primary service areas as well. So that's kind of it. If there's any questions or...
Commissioner Barth.
Dr. Luther, you continue to impress because every report you come in, things, it's even more comprehensive and full of more interesting data points. And I sure do appreciate your contribution to, well, you're a vital cog in our public safety scheme here. Couple of things I noticed were, like Garrettson has a fairly quick response, but they have a small district, and so they don't have to go from hither to yon, they just go from hither to here. And I think, of course, numbers are a little bit odd, but I'm looking forward to seeing maybe a normal spring where we can compare these numbers to what we've, there are roads that are impassable, and even keeping track of those roads is difficult.
And I've seen some of those, Commissioner, in the April and May responses because of that. They do their best, but sometimes they're just, there isn't a road, you know, and eventually they get there. But yeah, this spring has impacted EMS, particularly rural everywhere, you know. And I appreciate those comments. I mean, it would, yeah, sometimes it's like nailing Jell-O to the wall, but now with the technology, we're able to gather information in large clumps and then filter those through. And again, I would offer, if the commission has any particular interest in anything, whether it be pediatric illnesses or injuries or anything like that, we can focus on that if there's an interest.
And if I might, do you think that there's a likelihood that some of the folks that were determined to be dead on scene when we showed up may have been related to drug and/or alcohol-type impairment?
Yes. I don't have that exact number, but it's very impressive. It's, it confirms that we've got an epidemic. And I've been personally involved in two of those that were obvious deaths, and one young individual had overdose before, was involved in a save a life twice kind of thing, meaning that overdosed in Las Vegas, and did have Narcan, but went home and the roommate had the Narcan and wasn't there. And once they responded, then it was too late.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, I echo Commissioner Barth. That was a great report. It's amazing to see how much better information we're getting and how much confidence it gives us that things are really being monitored and paid attention to and improved on a daily basis. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, so that takes us to personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
I'm moved. Second.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Carrie Deaver, good morning.
Good morning, Carrie Deaver from Human Resources. I have the following special personnel action requests, starting with the anniversaries for June. A pretty long list this morning. Celebrating five years of service, we have Amber Bartels in Human Services, Kevin Hookman in Planning, Andrew Robertson in the Public Defender's Office, Lance Mattson and Wade Vederson, both in the Sheriff's Office. Celebrating 10 years of service, we have Dan Finnegan at the Highway and Sarah Kirkfleet at the Public Defender's Office. Celebrating 15 years of service, we have Mary Azave in the Auditor's Office and Michael Mattson at the jail. Celebrating 20 years of service, we have Trish McKee at the Register of Deeds. And our grand prize winner today is Rick Hensman, celebrating 25 years at the JDC. And I believe Rick is here. Am I missing anyone else?
I think Amber's here as well.
Okay. So congratulations to everyone for their service.
Yes, thank you so much. Any speeches? Anybody want to come up?
She runs to the podium.
Well, we really appreciate you taking the time to be with us here this morning so that we could congratulate you in person and congratulate all the other folks. It's a tremendous amount of, it's a tremendous resource for the county when we have folks with this kind of years of experience to serve our citizens. So thank you very much.
The last item I have for you is to record the county volunteers for May, a list of over 250 individuals across county volunteering their time to us.
Another tremendous resource, so thank you. Thank you to all the volunteers. Okay, so that takes us to item six, abatements. There are none. Item seven, notices and requests, there are none. Item eight, planning and zoning notices, there are none. Item nine, compromise of lean, there are none. So that takes us to opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here today who'd like to speak about something that is not on the agenda? We apparently had somebody who came early for that, but nobody else. Okay, so that moves us on to regular business. Item 10, we have a briefing on fleet management. Craig Dewey, good morning.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. At the end of 2019, you heard a presentation from Enterprise Fleet Services about a potential option for fleet management for county vehicles. Since then, the legislative session and the flooding kept me extremely busy. Once the flooding concluded with the Emergency Operations Center, I was able to reengage with this process and have been in continued conversation with Wong in also looking at what is the county actually spending on vehicles for its fleet, for maintenance, and then how much is the county spending on fuel on an annual basis? In most recent conversation with Wong, after presenting him that information last week, actually on May 29th is when I received an updated fleet proposal, so I have not had the opportunity to fully look through that, but Wong is here to present that information and answer any questions. I will note that there are some significant changes from the initial proposal as far as the number of vehicles that they are looking to put on the program. So please feel free to ask questions. Wong, if you wouldn't mind coming up here.
The closing will be available for questions after Wong speaks, but no action is being requested of you today. We'll look for further direction from you at a future budget hearing date.
Good morning, Wong. Thanks for being here.
Good morning. It was a wonderful drive-in last night, so thank you for having me here aboard. I have, I figured we'd review and look at the analysis and then open up to questions. Does that sound good? Okay. So what we looked at is a deep dive with Craig on looking at your vehicle expenses and... Craig on looking at your vehicle expenses. And we went quite a ways back to really find the averages in the data. Good, bad, or indifferent, the cycle seems to be about double, the average cycle of most cities and counties. For some particular vehicles that you're on a 20-year cycle. So basically hanging out, buying a vehicle and running it for 20 years or more. So, that in itself are unusual for the vehicles classes. So I had to reorganize the analysis to depict that in a better picture and show you what your current really spending today is and what it would look like working with Enterprise. Okay? So, as the numbers that we look on the screen here that you can see, we basically set aside 13 of your vehicles that average 20 years, which are on the bottom of the spreadsheet. And go a little bit left. And then down. There we go. So those are the 13 vehicles that average 20 years. Where, my understanding is, these vehicles we're not recommending deleting or getting rid of. What we're saying on these vehicles is your average budget each year to buy a vehicle is around $66,000, which equates to about two vehicles a year. So, in order to add any of these other vehicles, we have to really look at and work with the department head, budgeting, and look at the actual utilization of these particular 13 vehicles to see if they should be replaced or if they are underutilized and they should be deleted. With the average budget of $66,000, we're limited in terms of adding on more vehicles without increasing the capital budget to some degree. These vehicles have left its life cycle in terms of value, more or less. They're not worth a whole lot of money, being this old. So the time to replace them was long ago already. What we have to do is deal with what we do have and what we know is looking at these particular ones, which should stay, which should go, and how that would affect the annual budget each year. So, giving you an idea, with the $66,000 annual average budget to buy two vehicles, to add on one through Enterprise would roughly be increasing it by $6,000. So 66 to 72,000. Then we can add a brand-new vehicle that should be kept if the department heads and the budget is able to support that. Is the vehicle being utilized or is it just a side vehicle that should be deleted? Does that make sense?
Is everybody tracking? I'm a little confused, honestly, so...
I'm only halfway there.
All right. Originally, we looked at 37 vehicles entering the program, which would include all the vehicles and putting it into a five-year cycle. As we look at what you did spend on being on a 20-year cycle, is you have a very low capital budget. Generally, your expenses would be very high for maintenance costs when you hang, if you hang on to a vehicle for 20 years. Your maintenance is not that out of line for a vehicle being 20 years. So that, the data tells us then, are they being even utilized hardly at all? So are they being used maybe twice a year, three times a year, or barely used at all? Where you just have it for no reason and you should not replace it. Enterprise, we don't...
Do you have any data that indicates, I don't, I mean, I'd be shocked if any of these vehicles are sitting around and not being used more than twice a year.
We'd have to talk to the department head and track it.
Okay, so you don't have any specific information about that?
No. The county hasn't tracked the data on itself for the last 20 years on individual usage basis, as far as we can tell. You'd have to have some kind of tracking program on that, which obviously, partnering with Enterprise, we would love to track that and find out utilization, mileage being used, that sort of thing. So we could tell you if we're partnered up on our own tracking mechanism. On its own, we don't know. We're just looking at the average miles per year that are on the vehicles and it's very low. As you can see on like, the emergency management vehicle has 41,000 miles on it and it's 2004. So it's, what, 15 years old on that? So that's relatively low miles. At the same time, one that's tracking with 5,600 miles, it's a 1999, so that's 20 years old. That's relatively low miles because it's got 107,000 miles on it. So it's averaging around five. But what we don't know is a lot of these vehicles, a lot of times are cycled down from different departments as well. So it might be used a lot in the beginning, then hardly used at all. We don't know unless you've tracked it from its beginning. So unless the county did that, there's no way to know. So the best usage is to be able to talk to the department manager and saying, "Do you find this vehicle of value in your fleet that you need it? If so, then can we afford the extra $6,000 per year to support that vehicle, add it into the five-year cycle?" So if the vehicle is needed, then it should be included. But at some point, the, looking at the history of acquisition, the ebbs and flows of your capital budget went like this. So one year you spent $0 replacing any vehicles and to play catch-up, you spent $164,000. So nearly three times the budget of your average $66,000. What we're trying to do as a fleet management services is keep it more of a baseline like this instead of like this, to keep the vehicles on a healthy rotation. So when Craig and I looked at the history, it was very much all over the board. And these are the leftover ones that never got replaced at all. So unless we find out the real answer, we're not here to tell you to replace a $500 car with a $30,000 car. That makes no financial sense. So it really is going, it's really going to come down to the utilization and the need of that vehicle. Otherwise, it should be deleted. Since we last talked, a little crazy, we've partnered up with 15 cities and counties in Minnesota. So the program's growing tremendously in terms of value and the main thing, the driving factor was safety though. As I mentioned last time when I met with the board, the new program shows if we stayed on what your current budget is, we would save you $114,000. After the sixth year, seventh year, and eighth year, you know, in perpetuity basically after that, we'd be saving the county only around $4,800 a year from your current cycle. So it's not a lot, but the first five years as we introduce it, it's over six figures. But the main reason why a lot of cities and counties have partnered up with us is the safety aspect of all of this when it comes down to it. If the vehicle's being utilized a lot, a 20-year vehicle's not safe in our opinion for the employees to drive. But if you barely use it, it may not matter. Some of us may have an old pickup truck up at the cabin that we use to haul wood. I have a 93 Suburban. I don't plan to get rid of it. I barely use it, but I love it.
So when you're talking about this cost savings, is that if you take the 13 vehicles totally out, like if we just got rid of those 13 vehicles, then we save $114,000?
Correct.
So in order for us to go forward with this plan, we would have to be willing to eliminate 13 vehicles from our fleet?
No. You're still hanging on to these 13 and I want to track them.
Okay.
Good example is if there's a major breakdown on one of them. Let's say the transmission goes because it's old. It's no point to keep, to put $3,000 or fix it more than the value of the vehicle. You'd have to increase your capital budget to replace that vehicle, which that's what you would normally do with or without me. You're going to have to increase your budget to pay for a vehicle. With mine, the increase would only be $6,000 annually, roughly as an estimate, versus $30,000 that the county would have to come up with that year for that truck. The other alternative to this is some of the vehicles that we're replacing today in that, within that first five years, cycle it down. So as these vehicles break, take my leased one that's termed after five years and hang on to it for as long as you want. The word lease in itself is a little misleading. Most people look at leases as, you know, I pay for the vehicle after three years, there's mileage overages, there's wear and tear penalties, and then I give the car back. That's not what our program is. It functions as a finance to own. So after five years, your buyout, if you will, is roughly going to be around $6,000. It all depends on the type of vehicle, but as an average, you either make 10 months of payments, I guess, and then you paid it off and you own it outright, or you keep making the payments for, or you write a check for $6,000 and you own it, a five-year-old vehicle with very low miles. So it's, you're well in, way below the value of the vehicle. But you can take that vehicle and replace it with one of the 13 and keep running it out. But that's really going to depend on utilization, once again, having that discussion. And I talked to Craig a little bit. It's almost like we've got to annually budget each year to see what can fit into the budget and what vehicles need to be added in out of these 13 that make financial sense. So it's an annual looking at your budget versus the needs of the county on these particular 13 vehicles. Does that make sense?
Any questions? Commissioner Heiberg?
Just kind of a clarification. So if we decide to do this, basically we'd be $66,000 a year. And then we decide, oh, JDC's truck is broken, we need to get a new one. And so that year we would possibly add another $6,000. If we weren't at that five years where we could rotate, so that one year there might be an additional cost of $6,000 more than what we were planning on. So it'd be like when we replace our carpet, we know that we have a line item of carpet and the carpet is by $50,000 every year. This would be line item vehicles, $66,000 every year. But if we needed to replace one of these sooner than the five years, it would cost us an extra $6,000 that year to replace that car.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep. And like I said, if you didn't want to replace it with $6,000, you hang on to it longer. We will be tracking these vehicles as the ideal proposal, right, to see maybe it's year seven, year eight, year nine, maybe it's year 10 that we get rid of the vehicle and replace it. So there's not a hard, fast answer of, oh, it's got to be five years. The thing that has to be a balancing act is looking at resale value, maintenance and operating costs as well, and as well as the new vehicle replacing it. Electric vehicles are coming. If there's a time that we're going to replace it with electric pickup truck and that makes more fiscal sense and lowering operating costs and it's not so overwhelming in terms of price, then it makes sense, we're going to recommend it. Same thing for hybrids. A lot of cities and counties are having us look into that now. We're not there to recommend them yet because we're looking at the cents per mile numbers, but it is coming. I'd say within the five years afterwards, we're going to see a whole lot more mixed into that. If you look at my analysis on year one, let's go all the way back up to, let's look at this budget year. Because I know it's budget season for a lot of our clients. So year one, we're looking at these eight vehicles on top. If you go to the gray section, there we go. So here's what we're proposing to recommend starting out with. As you can see, the two, these all have pretty much over 100,000 miles on it. So these vehicles are being utilized because they're all around 10 years old. So the value based on the year as well as the mileage makes it a good candidate to replace where it still has some resale value left in it. If we went through this program and you slide to the right, there's your $66,000 annual budget that you put. So normally you'd replace two of these vehicles roughly, right? Maybe three at the most. If you look at the yellow where it says vehicle budget needed, this is if you did not use Enterprise and you went on board with, well, let's cycle these vehicles out ourselves and do it ourselves under a five-year cycle. The county would have to come up with $223,000. Therein lies the problem. That's a huge capital budget hit to acquire the eight vehicles needed as a healthy fleet cycle. So $66,000 is what you do use. We looked at your operating cost on these particular 24 vehicles as well and the fuel expense. So year one, the county needs to come up with $17,680 to get these eight vehicles. That's this year's annual budget. So if you want to line item something and saying, what can we afford, you have to come up with $17,680. This is assuming that we're going to pick up your vehicles and sell the eight vehicles and get roughly 21.5. It's a very conservative number, but it's a sight unseen if there's major damage on the vehicle, that sort of thing. But conservatively, that should be roughly around the value. So instead of spending $66,000 and having your average operating cost of 18, 8, 10, and 24, 5, 84, you're going to be at $17,680, 14, 5, 5, 5, and 23, 0, 48 for maintenance and fuel budget added. So this is the time where if there's one of the 13 that you want to replace that is being utilized, that the department head's saying, boy, we really could use this extra vehicle now because it's getting old, then this would be a great time to get one because you're already under budget by over, around $40,000, I suppose, over $40,000 this year. Or keep it this way and we'll slowly find out what vehicles to add each year.
Any questions? Commissioner Heiberg?
I think there's a couple of new vehicles that have been requested this year that aren't even in our fleet at this point. So if we ended up adding one or two of those, those would be $6,000 apiece at this point. And then as we continue to look at how we're utilizing our fleet management, there could be a decision later on that we really didn't need two extra ones and so we strike one off a year later or two years later.
Absolutely.
As you're analyzing how we're actually using these vehicles and if they're really even needed.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. You look at utilization and you look at your budget each year. And if there's a point in time where you have to cut the budget, we don't add vehicles. We may have to sell some that you don't need or use, looking at the utilization.
Any other questions? Commissioner Finnegan?
I think I understand what you're trying to illustrate, but the first eight vehicles, it makes sense with the number of miles and the length of time we've had them. But if you look at the blue, orange, and whatever color that is, those 16 vehicles are averaging less than 6,000 miles a year. So if we were having a five-year lease purchase, we'd be spending a lot less money to leave those in the pool for a longer period of time before we really know how long those vehicles are actually used on a annual basis, correct?
After one year, I have the mileage data, so I can see the mileage of being driven.
But some of these vehicles, we've already had a number of years.
Yes.
And we're not averaging any more than 6,000 miles on them.
Correct.
Especially if you take out the emergency management vehicle that's got 18,000 miles on it.
Yep. And that's the current miles today. There'll be more miles the year after and the year after that will be added on. This, that's why I depicted the average each year. So if it's only averaging 6,000 miles, it's got 24,000 miles now, next year it should have 30. Year after that, it should have 36. Does that make sense?
I'm trying to figure out how on a mileage cost basis, how 6,000 miles a year on an annual vehicle is going to make economic sense to trade it in after five years.
Sure. Resale.
Resale's going to have to be significant on a five-year vehicle, especially if they depreciate 20% the first year and 10% every year after that.
Right. The government buying power that you have for capital buys on the vehicle makes it a tremendous buy and sell program that the retail public doesn't have access to. So you or me. So I'll give you a good example. I, on my presentation before, and I do this for a lot of cities and counties, there's a slide in there that I show where the MSRP on the vehicle on an extended cab pickup truck for a public works, a very generic pickup truck, is, MSRP is $42,000, roughly $43,000. You or me can buy it for around $37,000 with rebates and incentives. The state government buy on it is $28,000 on a $43,000 MSRP. So it's about $10,000 behind factory cost on that vehicle. If I sold that vehicle after one year for the county, you'll make $1,700. It didn't cost you a dime to drive that vehicle. If I sold it after two years, it's a break even. It still didn't cost the money a dime into that because you drive really low miles. Most cities and counties average 5,000 miles. Most cities and counties average five thousand miles, five to ten thousand miles, depending on which type of utilization. By the fifth year, it's worth nineteen thousand dollars still. So it cost around ninety-five hundred, let's say ten thousand dollars to run it after five years. But it's worth nineteen thousand dollars, so if I, you know, after the resale value on it. So it costs you ten thousand dollars to operate that vehicle. Whereas, if you kept it for another five years, where it's a ten-year-old pickup truck, the resale went down to four thousand dollars. So you spent around twenty-four thousand dollars on that vehicle between, you paid twenty-eight, you sold it for four, so you spent twenty-four thousand on a ten-year-old pickup truck. That same pickup truck, if you sell it after five years, costs you ten thousand dollars for one. You gotta get two, is what I'm recommending, right? That's twenty thousand dollars. That's saving the county roughly five thousand dollars or four thousand dollars before we even talk about operating savings. Because the operating costs are lower on a five-year-old vehicle in the first five years, especially when you only drive five thousand, six thousand miles a year. You're only doing oil changes and rotating tires, very few maintenance expense on it. The maintenance increase in your operating cost and your fuel degradation starts after the fifth year and gets higher. While if you replace it with another new one, usually technology will have a better fuel economy on the vehicle, but as well as continuing on with that low operating costs as well. So that's why it's a huge factor. You and me, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. We're paying thirty-seven thousand dollars for that pickup truck, right? And what's interesting, however, though, most people, after they take out a loan and they paid it off, they might enjoy it for a while, but then they trade it in and get a new one anyway. Some hang on to it for ten years, right? But that's our personal vehicle, right? As a commercial government entity vehicle, I'm looking at just the basic dollars and cents. What did I spend? So, the, that buying power that governments have make it an extremely good time to look at the resale value and the operating cost. Uh, we have a client in Wisconsin that's a city, they're doing one-year cycles. They're flipping it every year and costing the county zero dollars because they know what the resale value is based on the numbers. The only reason why in Minnesota we don't recommend a one or two-year um, cycle is we're taxed the full seven percent. And the other part of that is public perception. It's hard for taxpayers to see a brand-new truck every single year sometimes, for a lot of cities and counties. Five years is more manageable on that as well. Then last but not least, when you say a five-year-old vehicle on a sedan and it only is being driven five thousand miles, so that's twenty-five thousand miles after five years, there's nothing wrong with a five-year, twenty-five thousand mile sedan or, or vehicle, except for the fact that it's worth a ton of money. And then if you replace it, you can continue the low operating costs. The other portion of that, going back to what I first stated, was for a lot of cities and counties, is safety. Vehicle technology is changing rapidly. Uh, by 2020, they're saying Ford Collision Analog Braking on the front end, when they detect a vehicle or a person in front of the vehicle, it'll automatically brake for you. We're finding that that's gonna be standard by 2020 in many models as well. Um, we're on the, you know, numerous generation airbags and analog brakes, um, electronic stability control. Anything older than its two thousand twelve vehicle doesn't have electronic stability control inside the vehicle, which the IIHS, the Insurance for Highway Safety, said behind a seatbelt, that's the most important option now. It's not airbags or analog brakes, it is electronic stability control. And that's on two thousand twelve or newer vehicles. So these thirteen vehicles that you currently have now, most of them don't even have analog brakes, let alone electronic stability control. There's hardly any safety features in these thirteen vehicles. So I hope they're not being utilized a ton. If they are, in our opinion, they should be replaced for safety reasons alone. To continue on to make sure that the fleet is updated with the latest safety design on the vehicle for the lowest economical impact, that's why they're, they've turned to Enterprise to looking at, how do we replace the vehicle without raising the capital budget immensely? Does that make sense?
Some of it. Um, I would, I have a question, though, on one of your illustrations on the pickup, for example. You said the vehicle after five years was worth nineteen thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
But we can buy it out for six?
Yes. And when I sell the vehicle?
I think I'd take that bet.
Well, I would give you the cash and, that's what I'm showing in this analysis, is giving you that equity, that's what makes sense to continue the cycle. Um, with, without that equity, you keep on running it forever, then it's worth, like these thirteen vehicles, they're not worth a whole lot.
Right. Which is where you come up with the information on the top gray area, if you will, with those eight vehicles, that does make sense. But I'm having a difficult time understanding it from that point down, to be honest.
Well, we're adding more leased vehicles.
Okay.
And here, I'll, I'll give you a good example. Go to the far right under column S where it says resale estimate and replacement year.
Which one?
Column S, it's in yellow. Go to the right.
Yep.
Stop, keep going, more right.
It's the very last column.
Right there, if you can blow that up. Can you see year one, twenty-one thousand, five hundred is the resale estimated of those vehicles? Year two, it's sixteen thousand, five hundred, right? Year three, it's fifty-two thousand dollars. If you slide down to year twenty, twenty-three, it's fifty-two thousand, go down to twenty, twenty-four, it's thirty-six thousand dollars. You can start seeing where I'm, I'm replacing the newer vehicles and they're worth a ton, ton more money as you replace them. Now, obviously fifty-two and thirty-six, that's less vehicles, that's why it's thirty-two, but the average is, is, is getting up there where the resale value is higher. That's the key, is trying to find that resale value on it to maximize that and keep your operating costs low.
Commissioner Karski?
My question on that column, then, especially you get to the year twenty, twenty-three and twenty, twenty-four, who is selling those vehicles? Are we selling them or are you selling them?
Typically, they want us to sell them.
Okay.
We, we, I think are better at it. Um, we hand sell majority of the fleet. You get about twelve to fifteen percent higher than government auctions. Most government auctions charge anywhere from sixty percent. And you're usually selling a five hundred to three thousand dollar vehicle. Um, we're talking about dealer-direct hand-selling the vehicles and doing a competitive, competitive bid process um, to many uh, closed type of buyers. Have you ever seen a one or two-year-old vehicle on a dealership's lot? Like a program, or they'll say it's a program or lease return or executive vehicle? They're really ours. As I told you in that example, on that, on that pickup truck where it costs no money to cycle out after one year or two, you know, one year you make money, two years you break even?
Mm-hmm.
That's what our company does. We buy a million vehicles a year. It doesn't cost us a dime. Why? We get the same buy as a govern- excuse me, allergies. We get the same buy as a government entity, because we buy a million vehicles a year as Enterprise rent-a-car. So the same recommendations, how we run a twenty-four billion dollar company, is what we're doing for you. We want to take the best data and information from a, the private sector, right? For savings and profit and everything else into the public sphere to save money as well. There's a reason why Target, Equal Lab, General Mills, Best Buy, all the Fortune five hundred companies all work with a fleet management company and they all have thousands of vehicles. They all answer to public shareholders, they all care about profit. They work with entities like me. So, what's interesting for Minnesota and internationally, Sourcewell is NJPA, which is a, a government cooperative for buying power, purchase power. And, uh, last year, Minnesota cities, cities and counties spent over a hundred million dollars with this cooperative. Um, we're the RFP winners, so they've done an RFP on us as well with hundreds of fleet management companies. And we're, we're awarded the Fleet Services Section of the RFP. Um, that's what's exploded in Minnesota that's gotten us in. Uh, and we work with over forty-five cities and counties now in Minnesota, there's only eighty-seven counties. So, it's, it's been a huge increase in looking at it. We want to obviously break into South Dakota and North Dakota as well. Um, Hennepin County is the largest county we have in Minnesota. They've just commissioned me to run a twelve-hundred vehicle analysis for them. They've started the pilot program with around fifteen vehicles with us last year. They want to, they, the, the concept has been proven, looking at fiscally with our finance director. They want us to run the numbers on their entire fleet. So...
Okay. And we get the picture? Are there further questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth?
Uh, thank you for your presentation. Uh, just a question, if we were to go forward with this, uh, what kind of timeline and what kind of contract would we need to sign?
We have agreements, we have no contracts. You can fire me tomorrow. Uh, we have a ninety-six percent retention, so we gotta wing it each year. The timeline would be the twenty, twenty model year, that's what's on here. Um, if you want to tie in the twenty nineteen budget to the twenty, twenty budget, we can figure that out as well, looking at what your budget is. A lot of these vehicles, um, we're talking about, to get a twenty nineteen model, it's already pa- passed. You can't even order them, so we have to wait for twenty, twenty models.
It'd be like September or something?
Well, ordering bank would open up in, in this month, and then they'll start production in usually September. And it takes anywhere from twelve to eighteen weeks for the vehicle to arrive.
Otherwise, we just have to sign the agreement, so to speak, or?
No, that would be partnering with us when, you know, in the next several months, and then we would put the vehicle on order. The timeframe would still be fall to winter before you see the vehicles come. Um, if there's a dire need where you need one this year, we work with Billion Motors, we work with a bunch of dealers that we can get one out of stock for you. But it's more expensive than factory ordering the vehicle.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, this was just for information today, so we appreciate you being here, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so that takes us to item eleven, is to authorize the Sheriff's Office to purchase seven Ford Intercept utility vehicles from the City of Sioux Falls contract. We didn't mention this, but that fleet management does not include the Sheriff's Office um, or the Highway Department, so. Good morning, how are you, Joe?
Good. Good morning Commissioners, Captain Joe Bosman with the Sheriff's Office. Um, and yes, our vehicles for the Sheriff's Office are significantly unique in that they don't travel only six thousand miles a year and they have a lot of equipment that also has to get swapped out. We've talked to Mr. Wong before in the past, and, you know, it's a good idea for us. Yeah, sure, that'd be great, if we could swap out vehicles sooner than later. However, that being said, we also have to have the cost of pulling all the equipment out and it's about fifteen hundred dollars to two thousand dollars per vehicle every time we swap a vehicle out, just to move the equipment, the cage, the light bar, the radar units and what that. So, um, our best option is, is we use our vehicles to the best of their ability. Um, after they have met their life cycle based on mileage or maintenance fees, we then utilize the City of Sioux Falls surplus sale. Uh, this time of year, though, we are asking to have the Commission authorize us to purchase seven of the Ford Intercepter utility vehicles. The City of Sioux Falls has a vehicle bid that has been awarded to Nelson Auto Center out of Fergus Falls, Minnesota. Uh, we also double-check this bid with that of the City of, the State of South Dakota bid to make sure we're getting the best option. And the City of Sioux Falls' bid is cheaper than the state bid for the same type of vehicle with the options that we need. So at this time, we had to ask the authorization for Sheriff's Office to purchase seven Ford Intercepter utility vehicles from Nelson Auto Center in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, twenty dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Any questions? Commissioner Barth?
Uh, Joe, do we replace the whole fleet every three years, is that the plan? I thought we got six at a time, but now we're up, we're getting seven?
So this year, we're getting seven, we give her six at a time. At the end of last year, if you remember, Hartford increased its contract hours. Um, so we increased our manpower, which also is gonna increase our vehicles and we had talked about the revenue offsetting that. Um, so this is, this seventh vehicle is unique to this year.
So then in three years, it'll be seven again, but next year it'll be six, so to speak?
In twenty, twenty, we are, have a vehicle requesting for six vehicles.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Now that I entertain a motion?
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, thank you so much for being here. Okay, so, um, item twelve was removed. Item thirteen, liaison reports, aren't there any liaison reports, Commissioner Heiburger?
I have two. One was yesterday, we had our first meeting of the South Dakota Area Health Education Center Supplemental Grant Projects. And what I was asked to serve on that board and what we will be doing is, um, are, we'll be looking into utilizing telehealth, um, telemental health strategies for first responders. And, um, in our first meeting, we just talked about, you know, who first responders are and they'll be doing a pilot site with trained CIT officers, not in Minnehaha County, but in a smaller county. I don't know that I'm at liberty to say yet who that county is.
Just as a point of clarification, that's not a Minnehaha County Committee, that's something you do because of your state.
This is a state, this is a state, sorry, yes, good classi- clarification. Um, and so there are different state stakeholders on this. Um, I sit on the Mental Health Task Force on the state, and so that's kind of how I got asked to be on this committee too, is just a, um, pull-down from that. And I will be going next week to a site visit, um, to a county that, um, on the east coast that will be, that has been working on doing officer training with, um, telehealth. And so come back with some information. I don't exactly know my travel plans, because they haven't told me yet. Um, the other one I wanted to tell you-
Once again, that's not a Minnehaha County expense or any, it's really not a liaison report in the sense it's not directly related to any Minnehaha County.
Right.
Okay.
Yep. And the other one is also a state, I guess, report then. And, um, on August thirteenth and fourteenth, maybe you want to do this under new business or old business?
Well, I mean, you already started, you might as well go, I just was trying to clarify for the listening public, though.
That Unified Judicial Services hosting a conference about improving the criminal justice system for individuals with mental illness. Um, the conference stems from the two thousand fifteen, two thousand fifteen work with the Helmsley Foundation as a result on the House Bill eleven eighty-three, which was the mental illness bill. Uh, but they have asked if we would be willing to partner with them, um, not economically, but just with our verbal support um, in the communications that are going out on the invitations. And they're wondering if they can use our local, yo- logo of Minnehaha County that we support the work that, um, is being done.
Sir, can they submit something, and do you have anything in writing that we could look at?
I have an email from Greg Sadosen from the UJS, if you would like me to send that, I sent it to Carol, so.
Okay, then maybe we can talk about it at our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth?
Kind of following on with Commissioner Heiburger's report. And she is going to be President of our State Association of County Commissioners uh, for the next year, starting in September. But I wonder if, Madam Chair, if you and Commissioner Heiburger have a plan on legislative, uh, things? I see we got an email from our State Association talking about the process to submit legislation requests. And do we have a plan on that?
I was, I've been in contact with Craig and Carol and we're gonna be sending an email out to everyone submitting, gathering ideas and, including the department heads, see if anybody has legislative ideas.
Under Cindy's leadership, I'm sure we'll get them all enacted.
Great. Any other liaison reports? I know we've all been busy, busy with budget hearings. So that takes us to new business, any new business? Just remind everybody, I'm sure nobody's forgotten, our budget hearing starts today at one PM. And then we have our second hearing at eight AM on Thursday. Any old business? All right, hearing none, I entertain a motion to recess.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll go ahead and recess for, um, we'll try to get started again about ten, fifteen, if we can. Okay?